Good afternoon, welcome to the December 19th, 2012 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum presence, I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First item on today's agenda is to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2012 and the December 5th, 2012 Planning Commission meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one item under old business today, and that is a zoning application for approximately 12.6 acres along Memorial Boulevard at West Thompson Lane to be rezoned from commercial highway to PRD Arlington Venture Partnership is applicant. Ms. Trajala.
Yes, sir. Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission, the item we're considering now is old business. Back in November, on November 7th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider a PRD application for property that was zoned commercial highway along Memorial Boulevard south of Thompson Lane adjacent to the Segal Elementary School. The plan included access to Memorial and to Thompson Lane, and the plan at first did not include access to Kings Ridge Drive along the south side of the site. We, after the public hearing, staff recommended that action be deferred to allow staff to work on a connection to Kings Ridge. Traffic is a big concern of the Planning Commission and the public and the staff. We felt that that connection would have some benefits to traffic. During the afternoon, in two weeks, staff worked with the various parties, including the owners of the property to the south. They, at that time, were unwilling to allow the connection. So, at the meeting on November 21st, staff reported to the Planning Commission the current status, and after a discussion, the Planning Commission moved forward with the plan as submitted without the connection to Kings Ridge Drive. The matter is now pending before the City Council for a public hearing, and then, just about the time I was preparing this agenda for this meeting, I received notification from the affected property owner that now they were quite willing and happy to make the connection, and were interested in seeing the connection, and wanted to move in that direction. So, I advised them that I would need to place this matter on the Planning Commission's agenda for discussion, and then to see how the Planning Commission reacted to it. What I will recommend is that the Planning Commission is interested in this connection, and Mr. Richardson is here today to help discuss this issue with you and the pros and of the connection. But if you want to do it, I would recommend that we have another public hearing as a limited issue on the street connection for this PRD to Kings Ridge Drive as a limited public hearing issue for January the 9th. That way, the issue will have been discussed and had public input before the City Council meeting on January 10th, at which the matter is scheduled for public hearing. I'd be glad to answer your questions. Mr. Richardson is here. We have a orthofono with their site plan on it to help discuss this issue if you have questions. Also, there are representatives of the applicant present if you have questions of them.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, you have a comment you'd like to make?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Ms. Trajala said, this is something that staff has always seen as advantageous, for one thing, to look at the synergy between the land uses, both existing and proposed. And the existing land uses pretty much dictate that the people that are using the existing commercial developments across, along Memorial Boulevard, do have to get on Memorial, make left turns, and some things that are difficult in peak hours. And also, we're concerned about the increase in the traffic, that it collapses more toward the intersection to the north of Thompson Lane and Compton Road. This provides us the ability to utilize, better utilize, the intersection of Kings Ridge Drive and take advantage of connecting some of the commercial uses back to the residential uses of some, both existing and proposed. For instance, there are a lot of rooftops to the west that do use some of these commercial centers right now. They have to get off of Memorial, or get onto Memorial from the commercial uses, and then turn right back up Kings Ridge Drive. I do know that there was a concern certainly stated by one or two of the residents about cut through traffic. I would propose to you that if you stand up there and watch it, the people that are back in the subdivision that are in fact using it are making the right turns onto Kings Ridge Drive, they're just having to go to Memorial first to do it. We're also looking ahead with the future issues of the land uses and know that there are synergies between the zoning on Haynes property to the south, especially with the RM 16 and the residential uses that ultimately could basically just cross Kings Ridge Drive, go to several of those uses that are along the road, whether it be the car wash, subway, or so forth, and then return back to the apartment complexes and never have to even get on Memorial. The other thing, and this is something you, I don't have the privilege of standing up here and telling very often, but this is a case where actually a little bit of extra traffic on Kings Ridge Drive would be a benefit to us in the fact that that would help us meet the signal warrants to ultimately signalize that intersection of Kings Ridge Drive and Memorial, as always intended, and thus more immediately benefit the residents of Brent Lees subdivision across the road. So, we see this as kind of a win-win for everybody, and that's the reason that we have been pursuing this, and having been able to openly facilitate this is the reason that we are bringing this back for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson, is there any timetable on this proposed lot? I mean, are we waiting for development to take place on the two tracks that?
Well, there's no timetable set. One of the things that would help generate the traffic is the physical connection of the road, and certainly, some of the timetable about generating the additional traffic may be brought on by either the apartment complexes timetable in the development of that and/or the ultimate development of Haynes property to the south of this. But certainly, we would like to see that happen as soon as we can, be in a position to get the state of Tennessee to buy off on the signal installation.
And this would bring some much-needed relief to the people of Brent Lees?
Absolutely, and that's one of the win-wins that we're looking at in this scenario.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's great to have you here today.
Great to be here.
Chairman Lamb, if there are no other questions or comments, I would move a limited public hearing regarding this particular issue for January the 9th.
Second.
Like a public hearing limited to the?
Connection.
Limited public hearing. Okay. Motion's made, second in all, in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We have seven items under the consent agenda this afternoon. I'll go over those briefly. First one is Florence Point Commercial Preliminary Platte for one lot on 4.14 acres, zoned PUD east of Florence Road. Rajesh Agarwal is the developer. New Salem Development, Section 2, Preliminary Platte for two lots on 2.96 acres, zoned commercial fringe. New Salem Development developers. New Salem Development, Section 2, final platte of two lots on 2.96 acres, zoned commercial fringe. New Salem Development is the developer. Summersby Station 2, Preliminary Platte for 23 lots on 6.02 acres, zoned PRD located along Apple Cross Court. Bob Parks developer. Stewart Crossing, Section 2, Phase 3, final platte for 12 lots on 2.69 acres, zoned PRD located along Ife Stewart Drive and Sally Stewart Drive. Milton Investors Investor Group LLC is the developer. Hastings Property Lot 1, final platte for one lot on 1.12 acres, zoned commercial highway, located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Manchester Pike. Denny Hastings is developer. And finally, Autumn Wood Commercial, a final platte for one lot on 1.47 acres, zoned commercial highway, located along Old Fort Parkway, Highway 96. Autumn Wood General Partnership is developer. Is there any members of the Planning Commission, anybody on the staff, or anybody in attendance in today's audience that would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no one, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on into the gateway design overlay, we have three items under that this afternoon, the first of which is McCabe Office Building, final design review and site plan for 17,016 square foot medical office on 3.18 acres, zoned heavy industrial and GDO 4, located along Medical Center Parkway. Craig McCabe is the developer. Ms. Trajala?
Yes, sir. The property is located actually between Medical Center Parkway and the Memorial Boulevard. It has frontage on both streets. It's behind the Burger King, if you're familiar with the Carpenter Village subdivision. This property was approved for an initial design review and final design review, site plan review, the whole ball of wax, back in 2011. However, since that time, the approval has expired, and they're now ready to move forward. Sometimes it takes a little while for a project to get moving. This one took a little while to get moving with the economy and the state it has been, but they're ready to move forward, and now, they need to be reapproved. Nothing has changed of any substance about this site plan. We do have Mr. Lowen, Mr. Taylor, present to answer any questions if you would like, but rather than go back through initial design review, we're just taking it back to final design since we've already approved it once, and ready to move forward. It was a good-looking building then, it's a good-looking building now.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If none, we're ready to have a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second item under the GDO is the Dental Excellence of Murfreesboro, initial design review and site plan review for 7,804 square feet medical office on 1.8 acres, zoned heavy industrial and GDO 4, located along Medical Center Parkway. Mark Hertle is the developer. Ms. Trajala?
Yes, sir. This property is immediately adjacent to the item we just discussed. This item is now before you for a initial design review. It has a very, very similar design team. Both Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC is working on the site plan, and Mr. Jim Lowen is working as the architect. They are before you with the initial design review, and today, what we want to do is have a little discussion where we engage the Planning Commission in discussion with the applicant about the building and the site. Staff has pre-reviewed this. Typical of the design team, they've done a very good job of putting together their application. They're anxious to get moving to final design. This property will have access directly to Medical Center Parkway by one driveway. It will be connected by a driveway in front of the previous item, the McCabe Optical, and then it will connect in the back to an undeveloped site that will eventually connect back to Brinkley Road. So, it's going to be well-connected. I would like for you all to hear a short presentation from the design team, and then field questions, and then determine if it's ready for you to give initial design review. If there's anything that you want changed about the site, or the building elevations, today is the time to speak up, because the next step will be to finalize it, taking into consideration your comments, so that when they come back, they can move on towards permitting. Mr. Taylor, thank you.
Thank you. As Joseph alluded to, it is about a 7,800 square foot building. About two-thirds of that is reserved for the actual dentist office itself, whereas the rear is a dental school. They'll actually come in, teach the, they won't be trained in dentists, but the assistants and other such. Dental school is going to be open two or three days a week, so most of the time, the parking lot will be fairly empty, but we have looked at that for the peak time on those. Ms. Trajala suggested there that we are interconnecting back to the McCabe lot to provide several access points, providing out to Medical Center, as well as eventually back through a future parcel to go down to Ridgely and access Memorial Boulevard as well, providing some underground detention to meet our stormwater quality and volume requirements from the city, and feel like the building provides a nice streetscape. We've got it pulled up as close as we can to the two Medical Center, nice architecture. Should provide some nice prominent features along Medical Center there, just like the GDO 4 I think was originally planned for. We do have the Boys and Girls Club to the west of us. Any vegetation over there, that's, most of the existing trees are on their sides, all that will remain, we'll just be supplementing and adding to along that side. And I'll let Mr. Lowen talk about the architecture.
The project we're discussing is 7,804 square feet, one-level structure, similar in veneer to the adjacent structure of McCabe Vision Center. Different colors of brick, Aircraft that we're using on this project. We've got a couple of small renderings here that show. The, along Medical Center Parkway, we've got a curved facade of the Aircraft with, which is a simulated limestone. Bronze storefront with bluish glass that also is reminiscent of the McCabe Vision Center next door. Three colors of brick on the building to define the entry points to both the training area and the dental excellence space, and then other colors just to define the areas in between. The building is intended to be uplit, well landscaped, and identified by the two main entrances along the entry drive, and also giving a prominent facade towards Medical Center Parkway. If there's any questions, I can answer.
I presume not. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If there's no comments, we're ready for a motion.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Final item under GDO is a Chipotle, initial design review and site plan for 2,544 square foot restaurant on 4.24 acres, zoned commercial highway, Battlefield Protection District, GDO 2, located in the Oaks Shopping Village along North Thompson Lane. Rookside Partners is the developer. Ms. Trajala?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located immediately to the south of the Bonefish Grill. If you're familiar with the site, there's a prepared pad already there. It's basically a gravel area that was prepared for a building several years ago along with the development of that center. It's right in front of the little GFS grocery store outlet. The plan is for a Chipotle Grill restaurant, and they are, the entire building will not cover that site. The building will have only about 2,544 square feet. The remainder of the site will be constructed with parking. The plan, we've looked at several different plans for this, as staff, as the owner has tried to finish up his center. This is what is proposed. They're ready to move forward with initial design review, and hopefully on towards final design review in the future. We have with us the architect and the landscape architect engineer on the project represented by Mr. Alan Ramsey, and I hope our architect friend will forgive me, because I have promptly forgotten her name, although I've had several meetings with her. We have, as initial design review, what we need to do is do, hear a presentation from the design team about what the site will look like, what the building will look like, and then offer to them guidance on your expectations of changes that need to be made, so that when they come back for final design review, they move forward quickly. I will state that the site is very easy. We expected a building on this site, most of the parking and perimeter landscaping on the site is in place. There will be some landscaping that will go with this, but it will be what goes around with the building. The building itself is the primary focus, I would expect, of your attention today. So, with that, I'd like for the team to come forward, show us your plans. Because this is an initial design review, they do not have a color rendering. It's not required, and we don't need it today, because they'll be coming back with that for our next meeting. But we do need to have an opportunity to look at, I think the plans in your package did show what the building looks like, and if you have questions about it, this is the time to ask.
My name's Alan Ramsey with Reagan Smith Associates, and I won't do a lot of repeating of what Joseph said. Fortunately, as Joseph mentioned, the site is, I think, kind of the easy part. The site's primarily developed. As Joseph mentioned, there was a pad previously developed, which at the time, I believe it was about a little over 7,000 square foot building. What we're proposing is a 2,500, a little over 2,500 square foot building with some additional parking, but not a lot of difference in what was previously approved before, with the exception of smaller building. But as Joseph mentioned, Joan Janning with Red Architecture is also here and represents Chipotle, and I will, I'll turn it over to her to talk a little bit more about the architecture in the building, and then be here to answer any questions you all have as well.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Joan Janning with Red Architecture and Planning, and I am working with Chipotle Mexican Grill on the new location here in Murfreesboro. What we're proposing today is a one-story brick building. We've added several design features, make it a little bit more friendly, a little bit more typical of the other buildings in this surrounding area. This project is based on one of Chipotle's new prototypical buildings that they have been designing for the past several years. It's their new branding, it's their baby, basically. So, I believe there are elevations in your packet. There we go. So, what we're proposing, the first elevation there would be our main entry elevation, which would be facing the main road there, I believe that's Campbell. This elevation shows storefront, we're proposing to do a charcoal storefront with two different kinds of brick. One, that's a pretty typical brick for the majority of the building, and then a darker brick at the cornice, and then above all of the storefront sections and at the water table, which will carry around to the other sides of the building. We're also proposing to do a open-air patio, which you can see in the bottom right elevation. There would be a louvered screen system there that is permanent, does not move. It would be the same color as the rest of the storefront system. Furniture would match the rest of the storefront system, and it's basically a very sleek, well-designed building. All of our mechanical equipment is screened, we're showing illuminated screening on the top, again, same color as the storefront. I think that about wraps it up. I can answer any questions?
Any questions? Ms. J.
Will there be access from the, lack of a better term, the Bonefish site to this site, would there be cross-traffic going through there?
Yes, sir. It already exists, and it will remain.
I just haven't got the good map yet, I'm still searching.
I will add, they're adding a sidewalk connection to Thompson Lane that does not currently exist, basically from the north side of the store out to Thompson Lane. That's really one of the bigger changes on the site that they're adding.
What's the number of parking spaces of?
Actually, because this is one of several buildings on this one lot of record, they combine their parking needs with everybody else on the lot. There's already a large restaurant, actually two restaurants, on this track. We take into consideration their parking needs and the whole bundle encapsulating what the parking is. With this addition, with this new store, with this restaurant, they will meet and exceed our current parking requirements for the whole lot.
Ms. Trajala, those parking tabulations on their site plan show that they will be, there's 213 spots currently, they'll be removing four and adding 40 for a total of 249 spots within this site.
249, right?
Any other questions? Hearing none, we're ready for a motion.
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes our GDO portion of our agenda today. Move on to Platts and Plans. First item under Platts and Plans is Forest Point Commercial Lot, site plan for 3,240 square feet, gas station, convenience market on 1.16 acres, zoned PUD, located along Florence Road. Rajesh Agarwal is the developer. Ms. Trajala?
Yes, sir. This site plan is a portion of, I guess, the Florence Village PUD that we approved several years ago for property along Florence Road. We have seen these commercial lots. In fact, we have approved a site plan for a convenience market on one of these lots. It never happened, and now they're coming back with a different plan. Earlier on the agenda, we considered a preliminary platte for four lots on this property, or actually for one lot on this property. There will be four lots ultimately, and this is the first site plan of those lots. The site plan is for convenience market. We have with us Mr. Ed Stevens today, he is representing the applicant. I would like for him to come forward and explain just a little bit about the building, and then I'll resume my conversation about the site plan. Mr. Stevens, thanks for joining us. One thing we always want to know about with convenience markets are about the canopy. We have a board here with your elevations, if you want to work from that. Tell us a little bit about the building and the canopy.
The building will be a stacked stone, kind of mortise look stone with stucco, bronze storefront and tinted glass. The gas canopy will have the similar stone and stucco columns, and then we've got the standing seam metal that will match the stucco color. I don't know if you're familiar with the canopy at St. Andrews Market, but it would be a similar look to where it blends in and matches. But basically, we're trying to, the main issue we had was trying to have the west elevation, which is the bottom left, to where, from Florence, you still had the appearance of the front of a building. And so, we've got that front, as well as the actual front of the building, is the south elevation on the top right. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Or comments from the staff?
Mr. Trajala?
Yeah, I will have another comment, but yes, sir.
The canopy is satisfactory with Mr. Lane?
I think this basically set out to meet his expectations. He'll have to comment on that, but I think Mr. Stevens has done enough work in our community to know that the Planning Commission has a definite desire to see something other than flat roof canopies, and I think that that's exactly what he's showing with this plan. Also, I will note that the, I actually, when I drive by the center on St. Andrews, it's a good-looking center. I think it's something that I'm proud to see out there.
It's very nice. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Trajala? Do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I do. I think that our staff has advised me that we do not yet have a photometric plan. To some degree, that will be needed before we have the initial building permit, and I'd like to see that before they turn their plans in for codes review, for the permitting. Also, I think our city headquarters has identified the need for some, what I call, alternative landscaping, maybe beefing up a portion along their eastern property line. But I think as much as anything, it may be the choice of species. Our landscape, our urban environmental, they have a good knowledge of what survives in these kind of places, and I think that they would like to have an opportunity to discuss this with the applicant's engineer, to get something that'd be maybe a little bit more survivable in this type of environment than what's specified. And by having that consultation before they apply for permits, it could improve the plan, and it'd be a better investment on the part of the applicant.
If there's no other comments, we're ready for a motion, subject to staff comments.
Make a motion, will you prove, subject to staff comments?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, sir. Item B is Regal Square, Lot 1, square foot veterinary clinic on 1.5 acres, zoned PCD, located along Memorial Boulevard and Jackson Allen Drive. HDK Partners is the developer. Ms. Trajala?
Yes, sir. This property is located along the southeastern corner of Regal Drive, oh, actually, that's Jackson Allen Drive and Memorial Boulevard, in the Regal Square Plan Commercial Development. The city zonelist to Plan Commercial Development several years ago with the subdivision, it's already been constructed. Now, we're seeing the site plans come in. We've seen, I think, two site plans already for office buildings. This building will be located at the intersection. The building that we've seen, the elevations appear to be a very attractive building. I think that, if we have a copy of that on the board, Mr. Lewis? Actually, typical of some of our architects or some of our veterinarians, it's probably one of the nicest-looking buildings on Memorial. It's kind of a funny thing that veterinarians put a very high priority on putting good-looking buildings. But looking at the building, and you can see on the lower edge of the screen, it may be difficult to see at this distance, but... be difficult to see at this distance, but it, it appears to have a good presence towards Memorial, and I think that they've done a good job of, of, with their architect, of getting something that will reflect well to the street. In terms of the site plan, the, the site plan has a couple of things, and one of them, I do want some discussion from the Plan Commission on, because we've, we've, we need you all to help us make a decision. The site plan, as it is submitted, shows that there will be access on Jackson Allen Lane, and there will be access directly to Memorial Boulevard. The, um, this is a, an issue that we've, we've got some concerns about. If staff has its preference, there would be no direct access for this site onto Memorial Boulevard. We expect that in the future, Regal Drive and Jackson Allen Lane and Memorial will be a signalized intersection. And the, the, um, access directly onto Memorial would complicate that traffic flow. Also, the last version of the site plan depicted a little island constructed in that access drive to try to restrict that to a right-in, right-out. I think that after we've looked at it more and more, if we do have that access, we probably would just as well have an uncontrolled access and not try to make it right-in, right-out, because, because it will be a, um, an element of misuse. Lots of times these, uh, little islands, if they're not constructed well, regardless of any signs that's attached to them, that they become misused by people who are trying to make left turns into them, or left turns out of them, even though there, there's an island. And it, and it becomes a little bit even more problematic. So what I want the Plan Commission to do is to, to discuss the, um, the issue of that access directly onto Memorial, and as I say, staff would recommend entirely eliminating it. If we are to have it, I want you to discuss whether or not it should be right-in, right-out. Staff believes that if it is to be there, it would probably be best to be, uh, uncontrolled and to allow both, uh, left and right access. Um, I have, uh, some additional concerns, and, and I'm going to go ahead and hit them real quick. One of them is, we'll still need an irrigation plan, we don't yet have that. We still will need a photometric plan, we don't yet have that. Both of those can come before permits, and I'd like to have that before they make application for their building permits. And, and of course, the signs, we, we always want people to, to know that they really need to coordinate their signage with their, um, site plan and their landscaping. We don't see their sign on the plan, and we would, we would really want them to take a careful look at where their sign is, so that they don't put landscaping in a way that goes in front of it, or cause themselves a, a problem. So I, I want you to discuss this issue of, of access, and of course, there's other issues you may be interested in, but give us some direction.
Mr. Adelot, it, it looks like to me your, uh, concerns are well-founded on that. Once, uh, this development is fully built out, with, we don't know what all types of businesses will be in there at this time, but, uh, right turn coming off of Memorial from northbound, uh, will be able to get in okay, left turn in there, but I, I'm afraid, you know, putting more access onto Memorial at that point might be problematic, I don't know. Alan Jackson looks like it's, I mean, Jackson Allen looks like it's, uh, I knew I'd do that before the meeting, so, uh, it looks like it's set up well enough to handle all the traffic. The, on the plat that I have here, it looks like it is, uh, right-in and right-out only over there, but what we've seen in the past is, that, that is one thing that's very often ignored as far as the right-out goes. And that's going to add, I think, a dangerous point to this, uh, access to, to the lot. Mrs. Jones?
Mr. Adelot, what, what kind of timeframe do you think you'd be looking at, though, for this signal at this intersection?
I think that it will be dependent upon the build-out in the subdivision and the possible future connection to the property to the north of, of Cedar View Drive. If you, we'll reflect just a moment and even look at your little location map, you'll see that there, at the end of Jackson Allen Drive, there is a Suzanne Landon Drive that tees into Cedar View Drive. It is possible that that street will be extended in the future to the Gerald property, which recently was zoned to commercial highway into RM16. We've laid the groundwork for there to be a connectivity back to, uh, signalized, or signalized, uh, or intersections capable of being signalized. We're not certain that the build-out of, um, this Regal, Regal Square PCD will, will meet the warrants. That's something we're going to continue to monitor, we, we are, we see a value to that intersection being signalized, particularly for the Regal Drive side into Regency Park, to facilitate left turns in and out of that. But today and currently, the warrants are not, not there. And as to when, I speculate it would be at the back end of the development, of this plan, plan development, and possibly with the development of the Gerald property.
Access from Cedar View Drive to Memorial has been terminated, hasn't it?
Just behind the convenience market, at their back property line it has been. It's still open adjacent to the, the convenience market, in large part for their trucks to be able to access their site and circulate properly. But it doesn't allow through traffic to the back.
Any other comments? We need some more discussion pertaining to that access onto Memorial, so before we hear a motion, I'd like to hear from, um, other members of the Plan Commission, if they feel that this is necessary.
I was going to say, my thoughts were initially, I mean, I, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't want us to have that if we had a, a light here, of course. And if it's going to be 20 years before we have a light, you know, then I kind of hate to take away that access for them, but, um, I, I don't think it'll be that long. But I didn't know if you had any ideas about that, that was.
I wished I did, but I do think it'd be less than 20 years.
Southbound traffic, uh, on Memorial wanting to enter this, uh, proposed veterinary building, if for some reason they did not turn their Jackson Allen Drive, I think they're going to be trying to turn in left at that access, and it's not designed for that.
That, that is one of our concerns. We, um, we believe that they're going to have a good-looking landmark building. I, I like the looks of the building, I think it's going to project very well to the street, and I think it's going to be well-known as a, as a landmark, uh, because of, of the architecture. And being at that intersection, I, I don't see a compelling need for the, for the access directed to Memorial. But again, that's something the staff has agreed with the applicants to, to let you all weigh in on and help us to decide.
Mr. Huddleston, did you have any comments you'd like to make? I knew I shouldn't ask that.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. The developer, who is a, is a veterinarian, was interested in keeping this access. He deemed that it would be beneficial to his business. I understand the concern about, you know, whether it'd be a right-in, right-out, or a full access, or no access at all. What we're looking at is a veterinarian office, it's a very low-traffic generator. If we were looking at a Burger King, or a McDonald's, or something like that, I'd definitely see the need not to have this. But because it's a veterinarian office and a low-traffic generator, I think it's an appropriate request. Also, the types of development that we'll be looking at in the back, as outlined in the PRD, and using, you know, common sense or whatever, those are going to be more office-type developments, those are not going to be high-traffic generators either. So I don't anticipate the Regal Drive, this side of Regal Drive being the determining factor of whether you're going to get a signal at that location or not. I don't think we'll ever generate enough traffic from this side of Memorial at this location to get a signal. So if, if we get a signal at this location, it's going to be because of the other side of Memorial.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Huddleston? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to chime in on this, before we move on for?
I have, want to make sure I understand, is the applicant's proposing a right lane in, right lane out, but not a full access?
The, the original request was full access. In response to the first round of staff comments, they attempted to make it right-in, right-out only, by putting in the little splitter island that is on the plan that's before you now. Staff is telling you that we would prefer no access at all. But if there is to be access, that it not be, um, right-in, right-out, that it be uncontrolled, both, uh, right-in, right-out, left-in, left-out.
There is a dedicated turning lane down the middle of Memorial, though?
Yes, sir, there is. Uh, and that left turn lane that's dedicated in Memorial is also the left turn lane that's used for people who are making a left turn onto Regal Drive into the Regency, uh, subdivision. So it's sort of, uh, used with greater priority needed for the, uh, the subdivision side.
But I, did I hear you say, though, if you would agree to allow access, you wanted it to be full access?
Yes, sir, because what, what we, we, that's exactly correct, and, and let me help you explain why. It's our, um, experience, and you can witness it around the community at different locations, that these type of islands become an element of misuse. People will try to make a left turn in to the right turn out. They'll be going down, for instance, if it were built, I, we would, we would witness seeing people making left turns off of Memorial into the site, entering the site by the right-out lane. Uh, or worse than that, they might be doing a wide U-turn, swinging wide and then coming back to it, uh, in, uh, Memorial Boulevard. Memorial Boulevard's very wide, it's got five lanes, and because of that, it offers some element of, of, of misuse. So, rather than having the misuse, we'd rather it be used properly, just give it, give it the right design.
Mr. Adelot, I just, full access or limited access still really concerns me. The center turn lane on Memorial is going to become a who got there first trying to turn. You've got turn, particularly traffic from State Farm, uh, late in the afternoon trying to turn left into Regency Park on the Regal Drive, and then if you have people trying to turn left coming southbound into this site, it's going to be very, called a suicide lane sometimes, and that might be what we have there, because it's not that far of a distance, and there's going to be a lot of potential congestion right there. I think I'd be for eliminating that, um, access altogether.
Chairman McCarroll, I'm representing the veterinarian. And first of all, I just want to say, Mr. Adelot has been very helpful throughout the process. As a matter of fact, Mr. Adelot showed us a picture that the vet had brought in of a clinic in North Carolina that helped us come up with, come up with a concept that, uh, he's wanting to use. The veterinarian, Dr. Barker, presently has an office out on 231, uh, out in the Barfield area. They've been there going on nine years. The reason that the, the doctor has been, I don't want to say adamant, but, but really stressing about how important it is to have this access, is they presently have a very similar situation on 231, where there's not really an access from, uh, the outbound traffic, so there's people crossing in the median. So one of the things that he was cognizant about is to be able to have that extra access, because their traffic flow is, uh, really not a, you know, it's a destination. When people come to the vet, they have their animals with them, it's not really something that they're coming in and all of a sudden decide, going down Memorial, hey, I want to stop at the vet. So their traffic is very sporadic, it's not, not very heavy. So he just felt like if, looking at the plans and seeing down where the Gerald property is and the likelihood that there, at some point, would be a red light on, on King's, uh, King's Highway, is that right, Mr. Adelot? King's Drive? Trying to determine what the likelihood of there being a, a traffic signal on Regal with the proximity already to that traffic light and Osburn Lane, that he felt like that it was, um, it was appropriate to ask for it. So that's, that's why he's, he's asked for us to keep that in there. So, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Anybody else? There's no other comments, we're ready for a motion, either way.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments to include full access.
Second.
Motion is made, the second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So, move on to the next item. Next item is Walmart Supercenter Number 2757, site planned for 185,970 square feet, department discount store on 17.04 acres, zone commercial highway, located east of Memorial Boulevard, north of Airport Road, Walmart Real Estate Business Developer. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir, the subject property is located along the east side of Memorial Boulevard. This property is located immediately north of, uh, the Airport Road. This is in front of the city's airport, located along Airport Road. This property, um, is a site plan for a, um, department store of approximately 180,000 square feet. The, um, site plan includes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 parcels that are being assembled into one parcel. All this property is zoned to commercial highway, it has been zoned to commercial highway since 1984. The site plan that we have before us today is, appears to be in good order. Staff does not have a lot of comments about the, the quality of the plan. The reason is that we have had several meetings with the applicant's design team as they have gone through issues. They first did scoping meetings to find out what would be expected of them. Recently, the same team has, uh, worked on a site plan on South Church Street, so they have become familiar with our expectations. They sought out our engineering department to find out the, uh, management plan that would be required for stormwater, and, uh, they have attempted to meet those requirements. They, uh, prepared a traffic study, they coordinated with our transportation department about roadway improvements, and they have attempted to incorporate those roadway improvements into their plan. The plan includes a total reconstruction of Airport Road, the limits of the site, both, both sides of the street. Currently, Airport Road does not have curbs and gutters, and it has two lanes. The reconstructed plan would include, uh, three lanes and four lanes and a portion of it with curbs and gutters on both sides of the street. The plan also includes a second public street that will be at the north end of the site that will also be signalized. Airport Road is currently signalized, the plan's called for those signals to be reworked so that they will function, um, in a different manner conducive for traffic management. The, um, architect has worked on the plan, they've taken, um, the staff's comments about the, uh, design, uh, and have incorporated, uh, and addressed several elements. For instance, along the north side of the building, they've upgraded the appearance of the north side of the building, and they have moved the parking off of it, so that, or the access drive off of it, so that now has parking spaces against it. And they've added landscaping. They've added landscaping and planner boxes across the front of the site. They have also attempted to address the slope issues along Memorial Boulevard. The earlier slopes were, were very steep. There will still be a slope along the front, but it is more of a three-to-one slope rather than a two-to-one slope. Two-to-one slopes are difficult to maintain and stabilize. They have re, they have changed the plan to allow for it to be a more gentle slope. The plan has also, at staff's request, incorporated a rover-style location on Memorial Boulevard, and they appear to have designed it in accordance with the directions that staff gave them. They will not be putting the shelter in place, as that's something that our transportation department will do later on, so they will meet our expectations and be designed according to our, uh, standards. And that'd be something that will come later. The, um, staff has had quite a bit of dialogue, and in fact, we had a neighborhood meeting on December 10th, where we, um, allowed the public to come and view the plans. We had 92 people log in who came, so I expect there's probably more like 110, 120, but we did have at least 100, excuse me, 92 people sign in as visitors. That was a lot of people, it was a big neighborhood meeting. That was at the Sportscom. So with that brief introduction, I know there's still a lot of questions, I sent to you all the comments that I, uh- I sent to you all the comments that I received, and in fact, some more that I received this morning, I laid out on your desk today. A lot of the same comments seem to appear throughout the numerous comments. It seems like people share a lot of the same concerns, drainage, traffic improvements, the scale of the project, the grading. Those seem to be similar themes in many of the comments. We have today with us the design team. Mr. Sean Henry is representing Walmart in a, maybe what I call a global manner. He has with him the site engineer, Mr. John Anderson with Site Incorporated, the architect who has designed the building, and the traffic engineer who prepared the traffic study. We have on our staff, of course, Mr. Sam Huddleston representing the city's engineering department, Mr. Ron Ballen-Chandran, and Mr. Dana Richardson representing our transportation department. Of course, you also have me, who represents the plan department, and Mr. Lewis, who may also be able to help. So we want you all to hear maybe a short presentation on the plan. We want to hear from you any questions. We want to answer your questions as best that we can so that whatever decision you make today will be an informed and proper decision. I will add that Mr. Ives, our assistant city attorney is here. If there's any questions, he might help. If I can't answer it, perhaps he can.
Chairman Lamb and members of the commission, my name's Sean Henry. I'm the local land use council for Walmart. We appreciate being here today. The deferral that occurred last month allowed us to participate in the open house meeting at Sportscom, and we appreciate that opportunity. As Mr. Adelot mentioned, this property's been zoned for almost 30 years for commercial highway, CH zoning, and there's eight parcels there. Those eight parcels could be developed independently of one another incrementally over time, but what we are doing is assembling those eight parcels into one development scheme that's allowing a comprehensive approach to this site, both with onsite improvements and offsite improvements, particularly there at Airport Road. So we think a single-use retailer of this site would be a better development scheme than having multiple developers within those eight parcels. There's some perception that this site is too small, and that is a perception, and that's incorrect. This site does not have a fuel center like the other sites do in Murfreesboro. This site will have 90-degree parking, which allows for more efficient utilization of the land. It's a very rectangular site and is allowed to meet the requirements of your zoning code for that CH district. And importantly, the other two smalls are much larger. They're at least 200,000 square feet and larger. The upgrade to Airport Road will provide a much improved gateway approach to that important city asset. Walmart is willingly participating in that effort. The design professionals, as I've said, have met with the folks who attended the Sportscom meeting, the open house. They've also met with the staff. They've met with the adjacent property owners, including NHC Adams, including the Hibden family to the south, as well as the airport commission and the airport director. And their concerns and their points have been considered and implemented largely in the resumme of the drawings that were filed with you on Monday and that you have before you right now. So based on that input and feedback from staff and from the neighbors, we have a revised site plan that we submit complies with your CH zoning requirements. Couple of examples include reducing the sign size, height from the maximum allowable 25 feet, that's being reduced down to an eight-foot monument sign. It was a monopole sign. It'll now be a monument sign. So it's going to be less height than what the airport sign is out there today. This site complies with the 1995 city drainage study that was done by directing the storm flows into that existing East Basin. The site's going to be more pedestrian-friendly. Walmart wants to be a good corporate citizen. They want to be a good neighbor to their neighbors. They want to be a community asset in this area of North Murfreesboro. This site plan that you have before you today, if approved, will allow them to do that. So we have professionals here to answer your questions, but we respectfully request your approval here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Questions from members of the planning commission?
I do, Mr. Lamb.
Joseph, as far as the traffic study was concerned, point A to point B of Memorial, how far did that encompass?
I would prefer that the traffic engineer maybe comment on that part of the plan.
My name's Jeff Mize with CDM Smith. We performed the traffic study and the question about the traffic data that was gathered. First of all, let me point out that we waited until September, till school was in, to make sure that the traffic patterns were consistent with MTSU. Traffic counts were taken morning and afternoon, peak hours. The length that was covered, and again, we checked in with city traffic before we did anything with the study, taking into account the entire area in front of the store, the Airport Road, the both entrances at, let's see, the Airport Road, our future entrance, of course, with our projections there, but the limits of Memorial Boulevard and the intersections there, let me flip to the back of the study. We did not go much farther than the intersections at Airport Road and then the intersections to the north as well.
I really think that at a minimum, the study should have gone from Haynes to Northfield and probably instead from Osborne to Broad, given the amount of traffic in that area and the need for emergency responders to enter into Adams Place, the fact there's the airport there and the fire department in the vicinity. Regarding the drainage, someone tell me about the berm that's going to be built, the height of that?
When you say berm, which berm are you talking about?
Toward the front of Memorial.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, you may want to come forward. I may help you a little bit. I think I have an idea of what you're talking about. But I think he's asking about the grading plan.
Correct.
About how you're going to fill the site. And that's been something of considerable discussion with the staff and the engineering team. We also, Mr. Huddleston has also done some research about other properties along Memorial to be able to put it in perspective.
Along Memorial, I mean, we've got elevation difference from Memorial to parking lot grade anywhere from three to six feet, depending on where you are along Memorial. And we've adjusted those slopes to try to keep them less than the three-to-one and three-to-one or greater in order to cause that not to be such a steep transition as we had earlier had.
At its peak right now, what would it be?
Peak elevation difference is probably six feet right there at Airport and the, kind of the southwest corner of the parking lot.
And Mr. Anderson, in what kind of distance, horizontal distance for that slope rise?
From curb line to back of sidewalk is probably 20 feet.
In that elevation, as far as light fixtures for the area, how far is that going to affect the height of the light fixtures as do they look spill over into airport traffic and into Adams Place?
Well, I don't know that they spill over with the ordinance requirement of a half-foot candle at property line.
Right. That is correct. And Mr. Anderson has provided to me a photometric plan. The photometric plan demonstrates at the property line, it does not exceed one half-foot candle anywhere around the site. And that's regardless of the height of the structures. That will be what they have shown, and that's what we'll hold them to.
So you said the maximum peak elevation change would be a plus six feet?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adelot, other properties on Memorial, has anything been developed where they've been raised in that way?
Yes, sir. There's been, this is not the only site that's had to be filled. On Memorial Boulevard, slope is a little bit deceptive. When you drive by it, you don't always realize what you're seeing. For instance, the, just as, for a moment, think about the, what was formerly the Shoney's, that's now the Gandola Restaurant across the street from this site. You'd be surprised to know that it's probably more than three foot above Broad Street. When you look at it, you first don't realize that because it's the way it comes up. So slope is something to take into consideration. The on Memorial Boulevard, you may be surprised to know that the airport terminal itself is about 12 feet higher than Memorial. It's way off the road, comes up at a gentle slope. The Krogers at Iron Gate, different ends of the site differently, but at one end, it's about four to six feet. Some pretty steep slopes right there at Memorial where they filled the site for drainage reasons. It's probably a good analogy. It's a little bit less than this one, but it's still, it's got a pretty good slope for some of those, our parcels, for instance, around the Jack-in-the-Box, around the little car wash. Those are pretty steep little slopes. What we will see here at this site would be about a, something about shoulder height for me, maybe something a little bit less for Mr. Gillie because he's taller, as the height. What they have also done is placed a planting bench behind their extruded curb on their site so they can place a row of shrubs at the edge of the site. What that helps to do is to hide the parking lot so that you don't have a parking lot with a lot of fenders projecting over and into visible from the street. It helps to, the landscaping combined with the slope will help to hide a lot of the parking lot from the street view.
Mr. Adelot, the first two properties, private properties beyond the initial space there, I think there's two individual houses that says, "Reliant Property."
Yes, sir.
Those two parcels there, I've noticed through the years, there's a lot of excess water there would be on those lots. So from there, how much are we talking in a raising from street level? Because that looks, as it appears now, to be below street level, those two lots.
Very definitely. Those two lots are definitely below street level now. And Mr. Huddleston, when you say they're about, what, three to four foot below street level right now?
That's correct. Mr. Adelot, the storm drain system that was installed in Memorial Boulevard consists of 236-inch pipes, and they're essentially at grade in the front yard there. So those were installed to provide relief for the drainage that wants to go west there. I think it's important to know, Mr. Clark, the grading plan and drainage plan for this project takes the existing drainage from that area and actually takes it south away from those properties. So be directing it southward Airport Road and actually reduce the amount of water that might accumulate in their front yards.
Mr. Huddleston, where from Airport Road would that water go? Does it go across the street into a retention pond that's on the Adams Place property? Where does that water go?
Good question, Mr. Halliburton. Actually, there are two basins here, something we refer to as the 231 North Drainage Basin. Mr. Henry referred to a 1995 study conducted by the city, and we use that study to address development, stormwater management for that basin. There's the East Basin, which is immediately South Airport Road. The East Basin would receive the initial drainage through most storm events. In some major events, perhaps similar to what we saw in May 1st and 2nd, 2010, that water can rise enough to cross under Memorial Boulevard through the Adams Place parking lot and into what we refer to as the West Basin. So under most conditions to the East Basin, under extreme conditions, it would go across to the West Basin.
I think that the Adams Place, like you said, in that event, that did happen. Are there any other precautions that the city or that Walmart would need to do from a drainage standpoint, realizing that, you know, that was an extreme event, using that term again, that we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing on the front end of this deal so that they are not affected by a rain event like that in the future?
Well, let's talk maybe about the 1995 study. The 1995 study really characterized these basins as bathtubs with slow drains, something we're familiar with in our community, Hooper's Bottom, for example, Chelsea Place Ponds, for example, the, and also the Bradford Place Pond is another example of a closed depression, very slow, very long storage of water. And so we know that it's volume-sensitive. It's not necessarily how quick the rain falls, but how much the rain falls. And so in our study, we considered that. We considered the long-term events, the long rainy events, several inches of rain over several days, similar to what we saw in May. And basically, the study's recommendations really involve three thoughts. The first thought was to make sure that the bathtub remains big enough to handle the water. The second thought is that, just like the bathtub in your home, what happens when it gets too full, let's make sure that we have overflow routes. The overflow route for the East Basin, we've determined is Memorial Boulevard. That's something that we would not want to see, but it is a controlling feature. And so in very extreme events, it's possible that water could rise to the level and cross over Memorial Boulevard. For the West Basin, that overflow route is Independence Way. And in fact, on Independence Way, the city conducted a project to actually lower that elevation to help protect some of the homes that we knew were already vulnerable to flooding. And then the third consideration was construction for new development. For those things that should be dry, for those areas that you want to be dry during those extreme events, we recommended minimum floor elevations. So the best protection against flooding, as we've learned from here in our community and really from other communities, is elevation. And so we set recommended minimum floor elevations for the East Basin associated with the overflow, overtopping of Memorial. We set recommended floor elevations for the West Basin, also based on the overflow down Independence Way. Mr. Halliburton, you made reference to the events at Adams Place on May the 1st and 2nd, and they let us know pretty early on May the 3rd that that had occurred. What we understand happened was water entered into a mechanical equipment room. It was built subsurface. It was built below grade. It was not, the best way to describe it, it was not direct floodwater entering that building, but actually, if I could use the term indirect floodwaters. And we believe that it occurred because there were some failures in some systems that were designed to protect that area from flooding. And so the floodwaters entered that mechanical equipment room, they had some mechanical and electrical failures that resulted in them needing to evacuate some residents and relocate them. The parking lot was not flooded, as we understand it. The access was not flooded. No finished floors were flooded. And so that mechanical equipment room was a result of that. It's our understanding that the management Adams Place, they have taken some steps to improve the reliability of those flood systems. They're very, certainly very aware of the risks. And I guess I could say that if nothing happens else in this basin, if there's no further development in the East Basin or in the West Basin, that mechanical equipment room will still remain at risk. And so we're very sensitive about that. We're very concerned about it. We've talked with Adams Place immediately following the May floods, and then again, of course, as this dialogue opened up. And we would like to come up with a way to help them out, and we think that they've improved their risk management, they've improved the reliability of their systems. But the long and short of it is that that mechanical equipment room is still at risk as it sits today.
One last question, some on this subject. Is there any, that, you explained it very well, thank you very much, but is there any thought process to any improvements or any more engineering that could be done with respects to the East Basin so that it would just limit the fact that hopefully none of that water would ever get to the West Basin unless it was something like the May flood or worse?
So the question is, I think, if I'm interpreting this, the question is, can we reduce the risk at the Adams Place?
Even further, correct.
Even further by doing more on the East Basin?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
And I think the short answer is not much. We do believe that there are some hydraulic connections subsurface. This is a sinkhole system, I think Mr. Adelot mentioned that earlier, that it does drain into a sinkhole system. We do believe there's a hydraulic connection underneath that would allow those two systems to stabilize and equalize over time.
to stabilize and equalize over time. So any water that we store on the East Basin, we believe would eventually have an impact underground on the level of the water in the West Basin. And so I think that the short answer is that I'm not aware that we could do additional studies that would help reduce the risk by doing more work on the East Basin.
What about capacity?
The capacity of the East Basin was based on full buildout of the properties east of Memorial Boulevard. So it's a big bathtub. The recommendation of the study was to make sure that the size of that bathtub remained adequate. The city undertook a project in 2000 to enlarge the size of that basin to account for additional runoff volume for properties on the east side of the basin. And we also have a compensating excavation requirement that if your property is zoned differently and creates more runoff, that you have an obligation to somehow mitigate that increased volume. As we've already discussed, the zoning of the property in question today was CH during the time of the study. It has been CH for about 30 years now. And so the contributions from this property into the East Basin were considered the maximum that they could be under our development ordinances at the time. I would also say that we have since adopted more stringent stormwater management requirements and also site development requirements that reduce somewhat, not significantly, but would reduce somewhat, the predictions on how much water would come off of a site under our current CH zoning as compared to 1995.
Mr. Adalot, I believe Huddleston is still assisted in coming up with this drainage plan in 95. I was wondering, did you make arrangements for Mr. Huddleston to talk to us about that drainage plan?
No, sir, I did not.
Mr. Huddleston, would you mind if your company was involved in that? I'd like to hear more about this and how it's working today.
Thank you. Chairman Lam, I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We did the design plans for the 231 Drainage Basin East Project and the 231 Drainage Basin West Project. We did the plans for the West Project in 1997 and came back in 2002 and did the plans for the East Project at that point. These plans were based on the 231 Basin study by Mr. Aubrey Fly, and he prepared that in January of 95. Mr. Young asked about the capacity of these basins. These basins are based on 14 inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. We remember the May floods of 2010, and they didn't approach 14 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. So there's plenty of capacity in these basins. As Mr. Huddleston stated, the primary reason and the way that these basins work is based on elevation. The 100-year flood elevation, as identified by Mr. Fly, based on full buildout, which is commercial highway buildout, in these basins is 595.4. So the basin on the west side is designed to get up to that elevation. When it gets up higher than that elevation, it goes out Independence Way. Part of the Drainage Basin West study was to rebuild Independence Way. Most roads, in fact, I guess all of them these days have a crown in the road, such like that, so that water sheds to either side. We built Independence, or rebuilt Independence Way with what's called an inverted crown. In other words, the crown is like this, so that if the water got up to 595.4, the water would go on out Independence Way and would not threaten any new construction. So because of that, we've set a minimum floor elevation for anything developed in that 231 Drainage Basin West side of 597.4, which is two feet above that 595.4, the magic 100-year flood elevation. So that's what, anything that is built in that basin needs to be designed to that elevation, and everything's been designed to that so far, and it's all worked. For 15 years, these basins have worked, and so as long as Walmart complies with the 231 Basin study by Mr. Aubrey Fly, those basins will continue to work.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Any questions for Mr. Huddleston? I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilli.
A couple of comments. Chairman, first, back to what Mr. Huddleston was describing a minute ago, whether it be indirect or direct floodwater from the May event a couple of years ago, that risk became reality. I guess what really concerns me is that risk became reality without there being that additional 16-plus acres of impervious surface that we're now looking at. The other issue is, I'd assumed that we were only going to hear just from the design team today, but with Mr. Huddleston speaking about that, with Adams Place seeming to be the focal point of what we have, I believe they have engineers here as well if they want to address this. I think we should allow them to do that. We allowed someone else outside the design team, and I think that's only fair.
Ms. Strives.
We have a specific question addressed to someone who conducted a study that was a part of, that has been a part of the city's... That has been part of the city's planning and design requirements for a number of years. That is different than, in effect, Mr. Gilli opening us up to a public hearing or public meeting. I think the chairman has the prerogative to not do that.
We did not advertise a public hearing, so we cannot have public input. Mr. Huddleston was specifically invited up because of his input in the drainage easement and the drainage plan that we alluded to on it, so...
That's fine. I just feel if one's inappropriate, both are.
I'm going to disallow that, Mr. Gilli.
Thank you.
I have some questions. Mr. Young.
Mr. Richardson, I have three traffic questions for you. What will the effect of this be on the back Starplex? I know that's not a major road that comes in from Dejarnet, it loops back around through the airport and winds through the ball field area and winds back out through. How will this affect that particular?
Let me answer that in a general way and also without objections to some future questions. Our traffic engineer's been more involved in the very specifics in working with their engineer on the engineering questions that you may have in the future about signals and stuff like that, but as far as general questions that we're all involved in, be glad to answer that. I do think there is an access and a path that could be taken back from the Walmart toward Dejarnet utilizing some of these, and of course, traffic's bi-directional and the ball fields and so forth use Airport Road to actually exit some of those sites as well. I think with the, if you look at the design of the Walmart site plan and stuff, working your way back through all the ballpark and stuff back into Dejarnet's a little secure as opposed to what are basically just right outs, two rights. If I'm going back toward Dejarnet, a right out of the site and a right onto Dejarnet Lane, and you're already there. So I don't think that that was something that greatly concerned us, but I do think that we want to coordinate some of the limitations of use with the Recreation Department. And if I can, if y'all don't mind, I would like to back up while I'm here and answer one of Mr. Gilli's questions and suggestions. What you were, I think, asking for is highly unusual from a traffic study, and I'll tell you why. I mean, we've done hundreds of these and certainly have not from a single site covered that much area. And the reason, and let me do just some real quick math for you on this. If you've got a site that produces, say, 8,000 net trips, that may sound a lot, but if the distribution's 50/50, then you've got 4,000 per direction, and a reasonable rule of thumb is 10% per peak hour, so now you're down to 400. So if you've got 400 per direction of peak hour, and then let's say I step that up further up Memorial, I've got Iron Gate that feeds that, I've got Haynes that feeds that, I've got Dejarnet feeds that, and certainly I've got the South Mound traffic from the Thompson Lane, Compton Road area. What you end up with is your numbers get so small as you distribute those out further down the line that they become somewhat meaningless at the points that far outside of the site. What we are more interested in is trying to make sure that we can meet the appropriate levels of service to where all of it collapses back in the site and make the site itself operate within our own criteria. So that's why I'm saying that, Mr. Gilli, if that makes sense.
Yeah, my next question is, is it Love Court and Haynes Haven Drive? How is this going to affect their ability to get in and out of their streets? Is the queuing going to be back from the light to where it passes their street that they can't get out?
I think, and most all of us are familiar, I live on Northside Town, I drive through there every day, so I'm very familiar with what happens in that area. There is some good, there's some bad. There is more queuing, but one thing that does happen right now that actually a little more side street traffic can be to benefit because right now, as you're aware, if you drive down through there, the lights for Adams Place and the airport many times stay green on Memorial because there's a relatively small amount coming out either side, which means there's always that flow on Memorial, which means that basically there's not a lot of gaps in those streets down the road. So while there may be more queuing, the lights themselves actually help, with more side street traffic, help produce more gaps on some of the downstream intersections.
Another question that I have here is, we discussed in several meetings and comments about emergency vehicle access. Talk to me about that a little bit.
Well...
Will this have a bearing on that?
I think all, any time that you elevate traffic, you have some bearing on it, but we have many, many roads all around town that, Northfield Boulevard, Melvins Parkway, Broad Street and so forth, that have quite substantial amount of traffic. Certainly any time you increase that, that doesn't make it better. But I think that the accessibility of the emergency vehicles will still be there operating in an emergency mode. I think we've all seen them driving around town. They do a very good job of getting around traffic and in large part, I think, the motor and public is pretty respectful for them. In fact, just yesterday, peak hour in Northfield, driving down through there, and it was backed all the way up, and people actually were pulling off side streets to let them through. So I don't think that it would be to such a critical mass that that would be a great concern to us. And I would suggest that probably the better responders to the question would probably be the, maybe the people that provide emergency services.
So, Mr. Richardson, did you state that the access to the parks, that's still going to be open once Walmart does come in if this is approved?
Well, as the prime user of the park, I think that this is a conversation that we're ultimately going to have. Mr. Adalot and I already kind of discussed that, having with the Recreation Department and seeing how they would want to treat that in respect to their activities. And it may, you know, there's ballgames and such, they may want to leave it open part of the time and close it part of the time. Some of that's their prerogative.
Okay.
I'm going to add, we've got two things I want to point out. One, the city's property begins right at the end of that portion of Airport Road being improved. When we met with the Airport Commission, there was some interest in, has some future time created and maybe a identity point to make it clear that once you reach that point, you are entering into private streets and into a different place, partly to help people know that they don't need to be driving in there if they're expecting to go to Walmart, that they're going into the airport terminal and then into the Recreation Property. The city may want to create a sign similar to what we have with 04 Golf at the golf course and in 04 Park, where you enter into the golf course, there's a sign, and it identifies what it is. That's something that is lacking out there, and it may be something that we want to return to, and that's probably the city's obligation. The other issue I want to point out, in the public street at the north end of the site, it will be signalized, yes, but at the east end of it, it allows for a future tie-in with the property that the city owns. So someday, if the city wants to create a second access into the park property, that opportunity exists. We won't have to have special permission from Walmart. The access to a property will already be stubbed out. All we'll have to do is just build a street to it and open it up. Walmart will not be opening it up. They don't need to. We don't want them to. We are, quite frankly, not ready for that connection to be made. But in some future plan for the city's recreation land, if we want to activate that access, we'll have that opportunity to do it, and it will be at a second signalized intersection. So that's what I call banking and planning for future opportunities for a city asset.
Mr. Adalot, as a city horticulturist, had an opportunity to go over these plans, not landscaping plans completely.
They have looked at these plans quite a bit. Mr. Brad Barbie and Mr. Kane Adams, who is a new on the Urban Environmental Staff. The one thing that appears to be lacking is the schedule that labels the trees on the plan. They've got symbols, and the symbols go back to a legend, but there still needs to be a little more. The plan basically looks pretty good. They've got screening where screening needs to be. Part of it is what I call a double screen because they're going to try to keep the existing tree row along the east boundary that is shared with the airport, try to keep it intact so it's not graded and bulldozed. It has a variety of tree species in it, but it also has a lot of privet hedge in the undergrowth. We'd like to set that down. Ordinarily, privet hedge is public enemy number one, but in a situation like this, it becomes a good screen, and we want to keep it. Adjacent to the maneuvering area, there will be a row of evergreens with some deciduous trees. So it will have a split buffer, so it'll create a buffer analogous to, in terms of adjacent to their parking lot, analogous to the back of the Krogers to Ennsbrook, where they have a dense evergreens that are beginning now to really create a good visual buffer back there.
Ms. Jones.
The pictures that we're looking at in here, which, thank you very much for those. For example, like on this View 3, and it's showing the landscape islands, they're all just grass. Is there not trees required in the landscape island?
Yes, they are, but the architect to better show the building has removed the trees from the islands in that rendering, just so that you can see the building. The landscape plan does include trees in all of those islands.
Okay.
But you wouldn't be able to see the building, the parts of the building she wants you to see. And Ms. Sunday Bauer, the architect, is present. If you'd like to hear from her.
I just wanted to say about that. And then can you give me an idea of what would be the view from Memorial Boulevard? You know, I think, just to clarify, for a lot of the questions and comments that we've had over the last few weeks or months, you know, I was under the impression that we were going to have this 11- or 12-foot tall retaining wall straight up from Memorial Boulevard that was holding back all this dirt they had to fill in, and then the Walmart building is way up there somewhere off of Memorial. So it doesn't sound like what we're looking at. So as I drive down Memorial, if I just look out my passenger side window driving down the road, am I going to see the Walmart building?
Yes, ma'am, you will see the Walmart building. Let's talk about the slope for just a moment.
Okay.
Okay, at the curb line, the slope will be almost seven foot at the very steepest point. That'd be at the south end of the site. At the north end, it would be more like five foot because the street rises in elevation as you go to the north. Now, if you get an idea, that's about seven foot and 20 foot is what Mr. Anderson mentioned. Think for a moment what you see in this room, just as a source of information. See the door over there at the, that's about seven foot tall. See the flag over here behind you? That's about 20 foot from the door, something in that order, maybe a little bit, maybe the camera behind Mr. Lamb. So from the ground to the top of the door is about what that slope's going to be. It will be planted with shrubbery, particularly at the top end of the shrub at the slope to help hide the parking lot. So if you're in a car, you're going to be maybe a little bit higher than where you're sitting now because you'll have the car under you. You will probably not see all of the parking lot because of the screening of the hedge line and the parking lot that is just out of sight because of the top of the slope. But more than likely, you will see the top of the building, not just the top, but the, probably the signage. You'll see the signage band, and you can see on the rendering by what it will look like. You won't see the cars at the base of the building very well in your ordinary car. Now, if you're driving in a large pickup truck or an SUV, you'll have a better view. You'll be higher. If you're in a semi, you're going to get a good look at that parking lot. But if you're in a typical... But if you're in a typical motor vehicle, you probably won't see all that parking lot because it will be hidden from view by the landscaping on that slope and the slope itself.
Which I, I mean, I consider that to be a good thing.
Yeah. If one were to add on to what Mrs. Jones was asking, if you were walking north on Memorial, just past the airport entrance, what would you see? If you were just walking?
If you were just walking, you will see, well, you'll see a lot of landscaping on that bank, because it's going to be closest to you. You'll also see the parts of the Walmart building, it's going to be inescapable, but you won't be seeing deep into the parking lot. There will be parts of that parking lot you don't see very well because of the front landscaping and the bank itself. Now, as you get further to the north, as the relationship between the street and the parking lot becomes less, you'll see more and more of that.
Good morning. What is the setback from Memorial to the front entrance of Walmart?
All right, that's in order of about 250 feet, almost 300 feet. It's relatively close by, in fact, this is the closest Walmart that we have in town. The Walmart on Oakwood, it's almost 700 feet from, almost 800 feet from the Oakwood Parkway to the front doors of that Walmart. It's a long ways back there. Similarly, with the one on Rutherford, from Rutherford Boulevard, it's a better part of 1,000 feet to the doors. This one is going to be very different. This is going to be much closer. In fact, this building will be much closer than the Oaks to Thompson Lane.
185,970 square feet, how does that compare to the two Walmarts that are in existence now?
The Walmart on Oakwood Parkway is about 235,000 square feet. It's, I think, maybe the third largest that they have, maybe the third largest Walmart. It's very large. It was built with one of the early prototypes when they were going large. The one on Rutherford is right at 200,000. It's smaller. The Walmart that was approved on South Church Street that has not been constructed yet has about 150,000. Now, give or take a little bit, because sometimes I forget if those numbers include the garden center or the canopy for the grocery, but that gives you an idea of the difference.
In thinking about, of course, this property has been zoned for commercial use in some 30 years now, right, Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This property was zoned to Commercial Highway in 1984. Actually, interestingly, to me, I did not know when it was zoned until I did research. It predates my tenure with the city. The city had adopted a new zoning ordinance and a new zoning map in 1984. This area was held out separate from the rest of the zoning map, and there were special public hearings held upon this and other property to the south of Airport Road, and there were special public hearings had on it, separate from the general citywide public hearings.
In looking at the flat map of the way the property was laid out with various out parcels, kind of master planned in there from the previous owner, there looks to be, the airport, the photograph, aerial photograph that you have in our agenda materials, shows, I don't know, seven or eight different parcels, nine parcels there, that apparently could have been piecemeal developed over a period of time. In looking at this, I'm saying, well, it looks like it's going to require at least three entrances onto Memorial from this site, if you developed it along this plan, plus entrances onto Airport Road. The property is zoned appropriately now for this type of development. I'm just wondering, is it, how do you compare piecemeal development like this as far as being able to handle problems that are brought up with traffic and drainage, as opposed to dealing with one entity like Walmart where it can be addressed in one single issue?
Mr. Lamb and members of Plan Commission, this is something that we struggle with as planners and as staff. We, I say struggle with, because it's, if we have our directors, we would deal with large developments that have the ability to construct infrastructure and to do a coordinated plan. Piecemeal development has a lot of what I call frictional issues to it. When you have piecemeal, nobody is big enough to do the street intersection. Nobody wants to do this traffic signal. So it's very difficult to get that traffic signal with the small lot paradigm. Witness, the Regal Square that we looked at earlier today, it was developed as a subdivision, and it's great, but all those lots will come later, and nobody will have a desire to put in a traffic signal. And if one's needed, more than likely, the city will ante up to it. In this case, right here, with Walmart, we're seeing one user that has the ability to construct street improvements, back to two defined locations on Memorial Boulevard. So rather than seeing several access drives, and these access drives, although the traffic volumes would probably be less, they would probably create friction, sort of the Broad Street, or even maybe even better, the examples we have south of this site along Memorial, just north of Norfield, where we see a Taco Bell in one lot, a bank on another one, auto parts on another one. Each one has traffic associated with it, and each one has, causes friction. So it's something we struggle with. Now, admittedly, when we struggle with it, the little guys probably create less net traffic volumes than the big guys, but they create the more dispersed friction. So both of them are challenges. If I had my directors, I'd deal with the big developments every time. One of my contemporary, or contemporaries as planners, the former plan director of Franklin once made the analogy to me, and I'll never forget it, he said, dealing with little development and little parcels, one at a time, was like being pecked to death by a bunch of ducks, as it just tickles and is difficult.
Ms. Drives?
I've got a couple of questions.
Do you have questions for Mr. Adelot?
Well, I'm not sure who.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, well, Mr. Henry might be able to answer a couple of them.
Okay. Mr. Henry, if you can come back up, Mr. Young might have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Here, again, this is logistics, but your delivery regimen for your truck delivery, is that generally at night, in daytime, or all the time?
I am not the person to answer that question, I apologize, but our civil engineer can do that.
All right, and then, is he here?
He is.
All right, I've got another question for him, too. What about, and this is important, the site cleanliness? You know, sometimes things blow and get to looking really ratty. Well, you've got a beautiful campus across the street, we don't want to see trash blowing and things like that. What can you assure me that you can do to keep this site clean and neat?
On the delivery trucks, basically, they're routed in either direction, either in the northern entrance or in from Airport Road, and typically, it's two to four a day, depending on if it's grocery or general merchandise deliveries.
All right. One other thing, Mr. Adelot, I see no out parcel storage, such as Dutch barns and fertilizer stacked and mulks in this site, is that correct?
None is indicated on the plan, and that is something we have learned to ask for. We want, if they're going to have that, we want to know about it so we can figure out how to plan for it. They do have a garden center, and they've indicated to us that all that will be kept inside that. If there should be any kind of a change, they would come back to us to discuss a site plan amendment.
All right, thank you, I see.
Frankly, I don't think that there's much room with their parking to allow it.
Well, it has presented a problem in the past with other sites.
Yes, sir, and here's part of the rule. If they're going to take required parking, parking that's required as part of our numbers, and use it for some other purpose, well, that's not permitted. That would require a parking variance from the BCA. If they have surplus parking, we won't know about it, if they're going to try to use it. We don't want them simply just putting up concrete blocks and some rails, landscape timbers, and then parking pallets of topsoil or fertilizer or whatever in their parking lot. That is not something that we want or tolerate, and we have had enforcement measures in the past where we stopped that.
Anything else, Mr. Young? Or, Ms. Jones, do you have anything else?
I had a question, again, back to the traffic study. You know, we talked about the traffic study, they had the traffic study from one end of the site to the other, and to be honest, I didn't realize, I don't guess I've ever asked how far a traffic study went or how long it went, we see traffic studies for all the time. But what would a traffic study tell us that would be unacceptable? I mean, have we ever had a traffic study that tells us something that says, well, we can't, we can't do this? What does it have to be before it's that point?
I want, Mr. Richardson's maybe too infatuated, but I want to offer some thoughts, too, about what traffic studies do. The implication that we don't study the traffic beyond the site is maybe a little bit of a misnomer. Part of what a traffic study does, it takes a look at the traffic that's in the area, the subject area at that time. It quantifies what is happening in that area, because that's the area of where we have the ability to request exactions, because it's most proximate to it. So they study what is there, quantify what is happening on the roadway, what the level of service is, what the, how many cars per day, et cetera, with the real traffic counts. Then another part of the study is to take into consideration future growth in the community For instance, we know that in a community like Rutherford County, in the past, we've grown tremendously. It's quantifiable how much we have grown in the past. It's predictable how much we're going to grow in the future. So they will use growth methods, and this is something that our staff, our traffic staff, will look over their shoulder, because if they're using a growth factor that's too small, obviously, it's going to have one result, or a low result. If it's too high, well, it's unreasonable, it's demanding too much. So we try to get them to look the right. And often, we will also look at committed development. What is it that we know is coming? What is it that we can reasonably expect? What is it that we have already insight? For instance, if we knew that there was going to be a, something like the avenues coming on Memorial Boulevard, that would be something that they would factor in, because that's going to be more than the background growth would be ordinarily. So if there's going to be known projects, then we try to take a look at committed improvements. If we know that the city is going to, has already got it in its capital budget, funds for rebuilding a road, say, for instance, something like the Veterans Parkway. If we've got in our project, we're already designing, it's on its way, the extension of Cherry Lane, for instance. Those sort of roadway improvements are taken into consideration to the extent that they're relevant. Then they try to quantify the traffic that the use will generate itself. So they're taking, they have information about how they act in other communities, how they act at other locations, so it's predictable how they're going to act here. The question often becomes is, what's the distribution? You heard Mr. Richardson mention, well, if half of it goes to the north, half of it goes south. Well, there's a little bit of art in figuring out, well, how much goes which way, because what neighborhood is going to shop at this location, et cetera. For instance, if you have two Walmarts on the same street, well, it's unlikely that you're going to have a lot of traffic from the same direction that the other Walmart's located, because, well, that other store probably covers us from that direction. Most of it may come from another direction. If you have a lot of nearby neighborhoods, probably a convenient route from those neighborhoods would get there. For instance, it's expected that a lot of people who may live in Northwoods or to the northeast might come from Dejarnet Lane as opposed to Norfield. So we distribute the traffic. So it's not just, it's not just only in front of the property that we study, there's general implications, too. So we look at what's there, what the future holds, and what the impact of the proposed use would be as well. Now, with specifics about the traffic study, I want the people who prepared it to answer those questions. But I want to give you an idea of the methodology that we're looking for, and also some of the role that our staff will have. Our staff is going to provide oversight, and now, as far as turning something down, most of the time, they will recommend improvements to mitigate the impact. For instance, if they know that the traffic's coming in from the north, okay, well, prepare, they'll have to do something about left turn lanes, a signalized intersection, or right turn lanes, to get traffic out of the roadway, to help to keep the traffic moving so that the level of service is maintained. So in the case of this plan, we saw a need for right turn lanes at Airport Road and at the View intersection. We saw the need for left turn exit lanes. We saw the need for left turn entrance lanes. At the north end, we saw the need for a future cross street into the Haynes property when it develops. We saw the need to change some of the, well, saw the need to reconstruct Airport Road and to change some of the geometry of that intersection so that it would work and function properly.
But, for example, X amount of traffic would require two more lanes on Memorial Boulevard. I mean, would a traffic study show you that? I mean, is that ever the...
It may, it may. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Did that answer your questions, Ms. Jones? Or did you need their traffic?
No, oh, no, 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 that was just what, that's what I was, and I just thought the traffic study in front of property was interesting, that I'd never figured that out before, that it makes sense.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Adelot, there's no exit from this facility to the east, because that's the airport itself.
Yes, sir, the airport and the soccer fields.
And the soccer fields, okay.
Anything else, Mr. Clark?
And that covers all those fields you're saying there, they're actually part of the Murfreesboro Park and Recreation.
Yes, sir, to the north, behind those parcels at front of Memorial, is the soccer fields, and then, of course, to the east is the airport property and the MTSU Aviation Campus.
Okay. Mr. Young, do you have anything else?
The comment I just asked Mr. Huddleston, and I probably should ask it so everybody could hear, is it a possibility to divert some of the water in a flood situation into those soccer fields?
Mr. Young, I'd be glad to help you with that. The question actually came up from some of the folks who have looked at the plans, and what I can tell you is that in every direction we go, from this basin, there is trouble. There's some, the Bradford Place system, the airport system, to the northeast, the Hooper Bottom system, the north Murfreesboro system to the northwest. Then, as we look south, we go into some undersized systems that serve Memorial, and so transferring from one basin to the other, you know, occasionally, we can look at that as an option, but here, I think it'd be very limited in our ability to transfer water from the 231 basin into another basin effectively.
I imagine if it was of the catastrophic size that was requiring help here, the other basins would have the same problem at the same time.
That's right. There's some limitations already there for what we can do. We've got similar basins there along Dejarnet, on either side of Dejarnet, at the north end of the airport, State Farm area, for example, we've already got basins that perform similarly, I can say that word. So there are not a lot of options, maybe to get this water to somewhere else where there'd be less, less impact.
Mr. Young, anything else?
Yeah, talk to me about the underground storage. Does that, the underground storage of water that they've proposed, is that, is it reasonable to think that we can increase that to slowly move, lessen the effect of a catastrophic rain?
Yes, and I think that your question, Mr. Young, deals with a portion of their site where they're proposing some underground chambers in the parking lot. It's a technique we've seen in our community in the last few years. As the real estate values have gone up, as the stormwater management requirements have gone up, the developers and their design teams have been certainly a lot more creative in how to manage that. What we need to look at in this situation is the impact of onsite storage on the 17 acres and the time that they're able to store it versus the time that this 231 drainage basin system responds. The site would likely respond in a matter of minutes or perhaps hours to the rainfall event. What we know about these storage basins is that they will stay holding water for several days following the rain event. days following the rain event. So the temporary storage onsite has very little benefit in this situation to the long-term storage that we observe in this basin. I think Adams Place management team reported to us that they observed water in the West Basin, on their property in the West Basin, for about a week following the May events. So 30 minutes of storage on Walmart doesn't help long-term for the results in the basin.
One last question that I remember that someone that lived at Adams Place asked me, and I think it's been somewhat addressed, but I just want to, if they ask me again, I want to be able to answer it. And that is, in looking at the parking site, there are parking places that will be facing Memorial Boulevard. And I'm hearing that, are there trees or shrubs, is what I understood, that would be between those parking spaces and Memorial Boulevard? And if that's the case, are they going to be such that the lights associated that would be coming in that direction would not be going on to the Adams Place site?
My review of the landscape plan indicates that there will be landscaping on that bank, and on that, at the edge of that parking lot, that will moderate the lots. I don't think they'll be completely stopped, but with the distance across the site, and with the amount of landscaping, it should moderate what would have otherwise gone.
Do we know what that burn will be? Well, is it an A, B, or C, or that hasn't been decided yet?
None of those are required, because this is a public street, right-of-way, and not a side or rear lot line. Were it a side or rear lot line, we would have required a type, probably a type C or D buffer, as we did with, to come in line with RS-15, the airport property, and the loading docks in the back, for instance. That's a type D buffer. But in the front, no, that would be a standard landscaping effort. And bear in mind that the, as Mr. Young has repeatedly taught me, and I guess I taught him, distance is the best buffer, and the right-of-way of the highway is in the order of 100 foot.
Even though it's not required, I mean, is that something that we can discuss as a part of the site plan?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You are welcome to discuss the quality of that landscape along that property line and on that bank.
Mr. Ailat, if that landscaping was tweaked up another foot, and separated by, what I want to do is eliminate any lights from that parking lot shining into the Adams Place facility. I understand that there's a road separating, but if you move that buffer height-wise by a little higher tree, and now I'm micromanaging that landscaping architect, but if you did that, that would pretty well eliminate that situation, and it wouldn't be something that could not be done relatively easy. Beefing up the buffer, as I might.
I don't know that the trees themselves do it, but I think the shrubbery.
I said trees, I meant shrubbery.
And there's, there's two parts to it that always come to my mind. One part is the initial installation, and then there is the maturing into it. I like the, I like to have the time for it to mature into it. But I do think that the city's horticulturists can keep that in mind as they re-review it before permits, and I think that we can get a commitment from the design team to work with them to achieve that. Mr. Henry, did you hear Mr. Young's concern there?
Yes, sir, I did.
And that is the element of traffic, not traffic lights, but automobile lights in the parking lot, overshining the landscaping into the, across highway and into Adams Place. What can be done with the landscaping, and I believe it's something that is doable to include. You may recollect that we have had that discussion about that planting bench, and the need for it to be able to allow for a good hedge line. I would like for you to be able to have your landscape architect to address that for us before permits, because I think you can, I think you can help.
We think that's reasonable, and fortunately, we have a local landscape architect here in the area. They're not here with us today, but they're on the team, and that's something that we can address.
That's one of the things that this planning commission has looked at in many projects over a long period of time, is headlights shining into residential and/or other use areas. So I think that's minor, minor, major, major importance.
There's some challenges there because of the slope coming up from Memorial Boulevard, but with planning material and being thoughtful about it, we think we can try to do that.
I think it's doable, and I don't think the expense will be tremendous for you. I think it would be a good investment.
Okay. Mr. Young, anything else?
I have a quick question about that. Is there required irrigation?
Yes, ma'am. Irrigation is mandatory on a site this size.
Even in all these little landscape islands, too?
Yes, ma'am, and in the beds in front of the building.
So unless that is addressed, I'm visualizing that the lights shining here would shine into the second floor across the street at the Adams Place. Is that right? Based upon the height that we're building the Walmart, and below grade of where Adams Place sits. Is that correct?
I believe that is the concern. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just visualizing, if you're going up as much as six feet on the east side, and I don't know what the exact, which Adams Place is already constructed, but what that level is below Memorial.
Seems like Adams Place is about four to six feet below.
Below. So you've got a 10-foot swing.
So has, has Walmart, Walmart says they want to be a good neighbor. Have they addressed some of the issues with Adams Place? Because we're all saying the same thing. We're all got the same comments. Has, have they had direct contact with Adams Place to make sure that they want to be a good neighbor?
They have had direct contact with the Adams Place administration and team. In fact, Adams Place people are here today.
Well, and that's why I asked them to speak before, was told they couldn't. If a majority of the commission wants that, is we done with council? Does that open that up, Mr. Ives?
Well, I think in part, the chairman has control over whether he wants to recognize that motion or not. I believe that he has that prerogative.
Mr. Ives and I had a discussion prior to the start of the meeting pertaining to allowing other comments from either the public or from anybody else that wanted to speak. Because it was not advertised as a public hearing, we did not, that would not allow all parties to have the same access to that notification. Therefore, some parties that would have liked to have come to speak probably did not come, knowing they would not be able to speak. Since no public hearing was advertised, we agreed that it would be probably inappropriate to open it up to other comments.
It's still my position, if Mr. Huddleston was allowed to speak, that changed that rule, and we suspended those rules at the council level before.
We don't want to get into a dueling engineers.
I thought that's what we were here for.
No, it's not. To make a decision on the project, that's before us. Mr. White, do you have any other comments?
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Gilli, you have any comments?
No.
If there's no more comments or questions from members of the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, again, I have nothing against Walmart. I'm glad we're getting the one out on South Church. I think that was appropriate, but based on the traffic study information we have, and quoting our Mr. Huddleston, every place we go in this drainage system, we have trouble. I know we deny.
Is there a second to the motion? There's no second, the motion fails, for lack of a second.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that the drainage system would fail?
The question was, I think Mr. Gilli alluded to, was that would it be reasonable to transfer drainage from the 231 North basin into other basins? And my response was that those basins had their own challenges, and I did not think it would be appropriate to transfer water from this basin into other basins on that complication. I think I would have the opinion that their drainage plan, as we've reviewed it, is consistent with the 231 North study that the city conducted, that had the buy-in of property owners, and was peer-reviewed at that time by engineering representatives for the city and for private property interest, as well as being conducted by reputable hydrologist. Their drainage plan, as it relates to the city's stormwater ordinance today, also demonstrates the, that there's compliance. And so I think that their stormwater management and drainage plans are consistent with our expectations.
I was just going off, I wrote down what you said. Every place we go in this system, we have trouble.
Is there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll say just a couple of comments. I think the biggest thing before us here is a site plan that we are looking at, that we have to review based on the information that is presented, and whether it meets the requirements that the city has. And we know the biggest issues are drainage and traffic, and the look and feel. We definitely want it to fit in with the area around it. And I don't, I don't know that we've heard anything that, you know, says that they have not met any of those things. And I don't, I don't know that that means that, you know, I mean, every project that comes through here isn't necessarily a project that everybody in town wants, or everybody likes. I mean, we look at a lot of things that a lot of different people in town wouldn't want, or don't want, or don't want here, and would like it better there, or they want this instead of that, a different box name on the box. All of those things don't change the fact of what we're looking at on the paper, which is the site plan, that I think, unless somebody can tell me otherwise from the city staff or anyone else, I believe that it meets the requirements that the city has. And I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Ms. Jones, before you make, before the motion is seconded, and I think an area of discussion specific was about the, some beefing up of the landscaping to shield the headlights from the side towards the Adams Place, and that to be, and I would suggest that that be coordinated with the plan staff and the urban environmentalists. If you would like, we could bring the landscape plan back to the planning commission at some future date, before permits, but allow the rest of the plan to proceed.
Yes, sir.
Just so that element can be confirmed.
I'd like to add that to my motion. Thank you.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but I'd like to make a comment. I'm not going to say everything that Kathy just said, or that Ms. Jones just said, but I will say that in the discussions that I've had with people that have called me on this all throughout the last four to six to eight weeks, I am going to reiterate what Ms. Jones said, is that we have to, in my view, we have to evaluate it based upon the site plan. And with respects to what's been told to us today, you know, I'm in agreement that this meets the regulations and requirements, and hopefully, no one will have any drainage issues as long as it works as the plan is described. And that's what we've got to make our decision upon. At least, that's the way I feel what we have to make our decision upon, is the site plan in itself, and not who necessarily is applying, or is part of the site plan. So again, I'll second the motion.
And if I could add one more comment, just FYI, because I know a lot of people out there, just so they know, my mother lives at Adams Place, so I'm as much concerned about what goes on for Adams Place as every single person sitting out there, and have nothing but respect for everyone and everything to do with NHC, have always, all my life. And so I just want it to be known that all the people that have been talking to me all this time about all the people at Adams Place, I understand. Thank you.
Adams Place has been a great corporate neighbor in Tennessee, in Murfreesboro, for many years now. And I remember when we approved the plans for Adams Place, the developers and owners that wanted to put Adams Place in there worked with the city to mitigate some of the problems that we're talking about today as well. Drainage specifically comes to mind, but a lot of the neighbors had a lot of concerns in Haynes Haven subdivision and all the areas out there about a facility like Adams Place came in. And Adams Place has been a wonderful, wonderful development for the city of Murfreesboro, and I don't think anybody could argue with that. I feel like they worked with the city to try to mitigate those problems, and I think the developers of Walmart have tried to work with the city as well, to mitigate whatever problems that we may see coming down the road. We'll try to foresee all of that as much as possible, but, you know, we do the best we can here with what we have to work with. We depend on the advice of our staff quite a bit, so, and our staff is second to none, as far as I'm concerned, and they have done everything they can to make sure that anything, any negative impact by this development will be mitigated as much as possible. All that being said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All ayes, one no. The motion carries. We have one more item on the agenda today, and that is the Singer Road addition for our site plan for 400,000-square-foot warehouse distribution center addition on 23.5 acres, zone light industrial, located at 4,500 Seagull Road, Singer Road. Ron Buck is the developer. Mr. Ailat?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located along Singer Road, just to the west of the CSX Railroad. The property is presently improved with a, next to the old Singer plant. I guess that's why this road is not called Singer Road. But what is proposed is some real major changes, and the major change includes a demolition of a portion of the building, and then a construction of a new 400,000-square-foot warehouse-type building. This is a, this property is zoned light industrial, it has been zoned light industrial since its annexation several years ago. The development has, we've had a site plan, we've been reviewing it. The development causes staff some concerns, and we've looked over the site plan itself, the site plan for the onsite improvements appears to be approaching a good plan. The outstanding issues on the site, internal to the site itself, appear to be, number one, the landscape buffer, with a little bit of coordination with our city's urban environment, it will be in good shape. That they may have to do some planting, particularly in the north end, where there's a lot of hagberries, but if they do some careful grading, and they do some tree protection, when they're doing the grading, they can probably preserve that and count it as part of the buffer. If they were to damage the trees, then they'll have to replant back, but if they will keep them, they just have to add some additional plantings. So on landscaping, that's where we stand. On the parking lot, part of the maneuvering areas still requires some kind of a bumper block or extruded curb. What we want to be careful of is to have trucks running off the edge of an asphalt and breaking it up, and then that causing further damage into the parking lot as time passes. So with coordinating with the engineering staff on any kind of extruded curb around the maneuvering and parking lots. It appears that the employee parking lot has extruded curb, that's good and works fine. The second issue is, we will require a landscape plan. We do not yet have a landscape plan that will be required. I think we may not have yet received our aluminum I think we may not have yet received our illumination plan, our lighting plan, but that's something, again, we want to see it before the permit. Now, with regards to offsite improvements, Singer Road has two portions to it. One portion is in the city, one portion is not. The portion from the west side of this lot back to Florence Road is not in the city. It is a county road. It is a substandard street, and literally from base of tree to base of tree, it's paved. So it's, it's, does not have the roadway elements we need. We would recommend that a condition of approval be that safety improvements be done on Florence Road coordinated with the Rutherford County Highway Department. The Singer, I'm sorry, from the west side of the site to Florence Road, the portion that's already improved adjacent to the church, that it be improved with safety improvements. This may not include curbs and gutters, but it might. It's just a matter of seeing what the scope will allow and what the highway department will require. It also may require some clear zone improvements where the tree limbs and the trees themselves are cleared from the road to allow for truck traffic through there. If there is truck traffic, we want it to be safe. We already know that it is a little bit narrower than we'd like to have our trucks on. The portion of the street from the west entrance over to Broad Street, there need to be some operational improvements. These would include a right-turn lane in Singer Road into the site, but also some improvements around the CSX Railroad and at the intersection with Broad Street. And potential to be confirmed with, by the design engineer, signalization of Broad Street. What we will expect is that this site will be occasioned by considerable truck traffic with a building of this nature, with the product that they'll be operating with, there will be truck traffic associated with it. Today, we do not know if the state would allow a traffic signal, but if they will and the operational characteristics demanded, we would want the traffic signal. But these operational improvements, they're going to be pretty important because of the left turns from Singer Road into the site. Also, we're very concerned about the stacking of trucks on Singer Road around the CSX Railroad. I want you to know that the planning staff, actually more like the, more appropriately the engineering staff of the city and the city's administration have been meeting with the developer, with T-DOT officials, to see what can be done, what, how it can be funded by other agencies for this. This is a, this is a big industrial use, so we're looking at a variety of approaches. So we want to look at the required scope of work. Who will do it may be a different matter. Some of it will likely be the responsibility of the developer. The roadway improvements are important. As I discussed, I could hardly believe that we would approve a heavy truck use on Singer Road without expecting some considerable improvements. We have other staff here if you have questions, Mr. Richardson and Mr., I don't know if Mr. Huddleston's been involved as much, but Mr. Richardson, and of course, Mr. Bill Huddleston and Mr. Kit Osborne with the design team.
What is the proposed tenant to go in?
I believe it has to do with Nissan and their parts supplier.
Okay. So it's the distribution?
Yes.
Mr. Adelot, I noticed on the landscaping plan, they're moving dozens of trees from the southwest property line. That's the bottom property line that runs along on our flats here. That goes against what we usually do, encourage trees to remain in property lines. Is there a reason for that?
Actually, that's, the plan requires a little explanation. Some trees, the larger deciduous trees, are being removed. Most of the cedar trees are remaining. The cedar trees, which is, a lot of them are mature, are very good buffer, very good buffer. They are perhaps some of the best buffer protecting that type of environment. They will be much better than the, what would be replanted. When you look at it, you see, you see a lot of circles. Some of those circles, a lot of them, particularly the smaller ones, remain. Some of them, the bigger ones are gone.
Okay, so you think it's appropriate then for this instance?
Our urban environmental department has looked it over, and they say that with the, you know, some selective removal of the deciduous trees that are interspersed with the cedars, and maybe even some of the larger cedars that are kind of shading out from the smaller ones, that it would probably be appropriate.
With your questions pertaining to everything that you just brought up, do you recommend a deferral on this?
No, sir. We recommend approval subject to these being worked out to the satisfaction of the plan director, transportation director, and city engineer.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, you have several conditions on that based upon the improvements of Singer Road, et cetera, et cetera, and there's a lot of coordination that has to be done, correct?
Yes, sir. And something I want to add, tomorrow night, I believe our city engineer will be presenting to city council a, some recommendations that will have to do with potential, potential funding for some of the roadway improvements. It's a, the SIA, is that the correct, SIA, State Industrial Access Funding.
Okay. There's no other questions. We're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments and coordination.
And coordination. And I'll second that motion.
Motion is made. To second it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Adelot, staff reports, do you have any?
Yes, sir. Included on the materials, you may have already received this, was a letter from Ms. Melissa Wright, our city recorder. And it says, "As you know, the city's ethical standards policy requires that you complete the statement of disclosure of interest form and submit it to me, the city recorder at P.O. Box 1139, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, by January 31st of each year. Attached is a blank form for you to use for this year's filing. Please remember that your signature must be witnessed. You may wish to keep a copy for your files." It's been put to you. You need to address this if you have not already. If you can do it today while you're here, it'd be real good. We could probably find a witness, to witness your signatures, so that you can go ahead and file it with Ms. Wright. If you can't do it today, please attend this before the 31st. This is a responsibility that you have as a member of the Plan Commission.
A question regarding that. Is there a state requirement? Now, I was received an email of some sort that said that we were, can you answer it? You know what I'm talking about?
I defer to Mr. Ives. It's only for the two of us that are elected. I believe that the state, is that correct, David?
I believe that's correct, that the elected city council person have either a different or an additional disclosure that they are required to have.
It's very similar, but it's only for those of us that are elected to have to, the two of us.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Adelot?
Do you have those forms, Mr. Adelot?
You've got them?
It's right now.
It's on your desk.
Oh, okay.
One more.
There's a lot of stuff on my desk.
Actually, two very brief items. One is, I think everybody's got their education requirements. Good job, everybody. Thank you. We've had a good year, and you took care of that responsibility. Very good. And perhaps most important, I want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. I would say that with the year we've had, you have earned it, and we look forward to working with you again next year.
Well, we certainly ended on an exciting note.
Yes, we did.
Anyway, I want to reiterate that. He's stealing my thunder, but I want to wish everybody a great Christmas and Merry, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year. We stand adjourned.[1787.88]